You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call this Fayetteville City Council meeting for Monday, February 10th to order and honored to welcome the Reverend Godbolt here to do the invocation for us of the Christ Gospel Cathedral. Can we all stand please and remain standing for the pledge?
Their dying fire in need of logs, the first man held his back. Of the faces around the flame, he noticed that one was black. The second man looked across the way and saw no one from his church, for he could not bring himself to give that fire his stick of birch. The third man sent in tattered clothes and gave his old ragged coat a hitch and said, "What should my log be to use at first to warm the idle rich?" The rich man sat back and thought of all the goods he had in store and how he could keep what he'd earned from the lazy, shiftless poor. The black man's face bespoke revenge as a fire passed from his sight, for all he saw in his stick of wood was a chance to smite the white. The last men of this forlorn group been not but for to gain, but to give those who gave was how he played this game. With logs held tight in death-still hands was proof of human sin, for they did not die from the cold without, they died from the cold within. Our Father and our God, we approach you today in the precious name of your Son. We thank you for the work that you've already done through these men and women, but we praise you even the more for your hand on every heart, mind, and soul. Our city needs these people. Our county needs it. Our nation needs you. We ask now that you would guide every thought with wisdom, with your understanding, with your knowledge, that every choice is made prudently for every citizen of this city. We ask in your name, bind us together with cords of love, that nothing is done out of your will, for we ask in your Son's Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for
Thank you Reverend Godbolt. It's always a pleasure to hear your voice. Thank you. Council will move into the approval of the agenda. That's 4.0. Ms. Jensen?
Um, yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with an addition of the recognition of awards.
Okay, that would be 4.01. Have a motion and a second, Mr. Wright. Ms. Jensen? You get two votes tonight. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. So we'll move into 4.01 now, which is the recognitions. And we will start with the recognition for the American Red Cross. Counsel Harp is going to join Mr. Harris.
Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes. Those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need. And whereas American Red Cross heroes are on the front lines every day, they volunteer their time, give blood, take life-saving courses, provide financial donations, and they do this all for the good of mankind. Whereas we would like to remember our heroes here in Fayetteville, who give up to help people in need. They work tirelessly to help in time of disaster. When someone needs life-saving blood or on the comfort of helping hand, they provide round-the-clock support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and teach life-saving classes. And whereas when an injured service member ended up in the hospital, hospital, far from home, the American Red Cross offered comfort. When a hospital patient needed blood, the American Red Cross blood donors helped them. When a lifeguard jumped in to save a drowning child, they were there to save them. Whereas we dedicate the month of March, and we can even start now in February, to celebrate all of those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations, time, money, blood, to fulfill this mission. Now therefore, our Mayor Nat Robertson and our City Council do hereby proclaim March 2014 to be American Red Cross Month in Fayetteville, our city of heroes and a hometown feeling, and encourage all residents to support this organization with their noble mission.
Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Proten.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate for him to say a word or two?
Absolutely. In fact, Mr. Harris, share just a little bit about what you've been up to this past week.
Well, we've been really busy and we're doing our mission that we've done over 100 years in Fayetteville, almost 100 years in Fayetteville. We have been busy this weekend. We had an event that was a fire on Eastern Boulevard and we're appreciative of the teamwork that the Red Cross and all the city gave us, the Smith Center as a sheltering, we're still sheltering those people. So it's part of our mission, we're trying to get them back on the road to recovery, which is also our mission. But we do it 365 days a year, 24/7, and we're going to continue to do that. We're trying to build a resilient community. We want everybody to be prepared. We've had, luckily, we have no tornadoes or any major events, but we have had a rash of fires. So we're trying to get everybody to be prepared. We're out in the community doing that. That's what we want to do in March, thank our supporters. We're going to be out there making everybody aware that we need to be safe. We probably may have some snow this week. It's another event. We'll be there. We do it with volunteers. We have a small staff, only four, but we have hundreds of volunteers and they responded to the fire and we're still doing the sheltering. And we're partnering with the Salvation Army right now, so that's where I'm headed after this. But we want to thank the city for their support. And everybody needs to be mindful that you can be an everyday hero with things that you learn from the Red Cross, whether it's life-saving at a pool or CPR that you've learned, or even donating blood. We provide 40% of the country's blood. So thank you for your support over the years and we'll continue to be doing it for another 100 years and we're excited and proud to do that. As a gift, I want everybody to be thinking, I want to give you a gift, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I am a little first aid kit. I hope you put it in your car or at your home, but I want you to look at that cross and remind yourself that we're out there and to support you. So thank you for everything y'all do and our community. We want to make it a better place.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for what you do as well. Great organization. Mr. Hurst, if you'll come down front and we'll ask Ms. Jonah Edmonds, Jocelyn Naylor, and Teresa Dickerson to join Mr. Hurst.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we just?
You'll have to fight with Mr. Hurst after the meeting. Ms. Jonah Edmonds is the Miss North Carolina 2013. Jocelyn Naylor is Miss Fayetteville 2014. And Teresa Dickerson is Miss Fayetteville Outstanding Teen 2014. Thank you ladies for joining us.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council and Mr. Crisp. It's just tradition. And it is certainly my honor and my privilege to keep this tradition as long as I'm serving the citizens of District 5 and the city of Fayetteville. We have something, a gift, to present to our queens. And first of all, to Ms. Edmonds, let me read this certificate. Certificate of Excellence. On behalf of the members of City Council and our more than 200,000 citizens, we hereby present this certificate of excellence in recognition of Jonah Edmonds, Miss North Carolina 2013, for her dedicated and untiring commitment to making a difference in our lives through readers to leaders, promoting literacy in America's youth, and as are Miss North Carolina 2013. And our best wishes for your every success as an exemplary ambassador for our great state this 10th day of February 2014. And of course, this beautiful coin engraved with your name on it, which you can open up and look and it's beautiful right there.
Yeah.
Yep. Very good. So this is for you and we'll give you a little bit to say a few words as each queen will have that opportunity.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much and thank you for having me today. Fayetteville holds a special place in my heart. I served as Fayetteville's Outstanding Teen in 2006. I'm from Lumberton, North Carolina, but my father served here at Fort Bragg. He was in the Special Forces for about 20 years, so we frequented Fayetteville often. So it's my honor to be back and I'm so excited to be able to serve as Miss North Carolina. The Miss America Organization is the leading provider of scholarships to young women in the entire world, and that's such a huge distinguishing factor from all of the other pageants that are out there. I know often I get asked, you know, well, what's the difference between you and someone on Toddlers and Tieres? And I'm like, come on, guys, because I spend a lot of time in elementary and middle school. But scholarship and then having a talent and being able to express that within the community, and then especially our platform, as you mentioned, Readers to Leaders also holds a huge place in my heart. And I've been a proud advocate of that this year and the past three years that I've been competing for this title. So thank you all for having me and thank you for this wonderful award.
And to Jocelyn, certificate of excellence. On behalf of the members of City Council and our more than 200,000 citizens, we hereby present this certificate of excellence in recognition of Jocelyn Naylor, Miss Fayetteville 2014, for her dedicated and tiring commitment to making a difference in our lives through her platform as our Miss Fayetteville 2014. Our best wishes for your every success as a exemplary ambassador of our great city and surrounding communities this 10th day of February 2014. Of course, signed by Mayor Nat Robertson and the coin's in there for you as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jocelyn.
Good evening. As you said, my name's Jocelyn Naylor. I am thrilled to be Miss Fayetteville this year. I just want to let everybody know that I have chosen to make it my goal this year to make genuine relationships and really make lasting connections. I am very well aware that I'll compete for Miss North Carolina on June 21st, really the whole week before. And I'm completely, completely just excited for the opportunity, but no matter how I come back to Fayetteville, if I come back as Miss North Carolina or if I come back as not, I will still be Miss Fayetteville and I'm just so, so thrilled to be here and to have those lasting connections that will hopefully stay with me long beyond June. So thank you so, so much for having me and Teresa and Jonah as well, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to represent Fayetteville. I would also like to just point out that I will be more than happy and willing to be at any of, any upcoming events that anyone needs help with. I will be thrilled to be there as a volunteer, so please do let me know. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
And Teresa, Outstanding Teen. On behalf of the members of the City Council and how many thousand citizens? 200?
200.
Yeah, 200, over 200,000 citizens. We hereby present this certificate and coin to you, Ms. Dickerson, Miss Fayetteville, Outstanding Teen 2014, for your dedicated and untiring commitment to making a difference in our lives through American for the Arts, and as are Miss Fayetteville's Outstanding Teen 2014, our best wishes, of course, for your every success as an exemplary ambassador of our great city and its surrounding communities this 10th day of February 2014. And I appreciate all of y'all having me as Facebook friends. I like that. So here you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Dickerson. As you said, I'm Miss Fayetteville's Outstanding Teen, and it's been such an amazing journey already. Jocelyn and I were just crowned in January and being crowned in your hometown is something very special to my heart. You know, being able to be a queen for another city is pretty cool, but there's nothing better than being able to represent your own city. And I think with my parents being so involved, you know, this is definitely my turn and I love this city so much. So thank you guys for all being great representatives and I just joined, so.
Thank you.
Next year, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Council, at this time, we'll go into our 5.0 public forum. And this is time that Fayetteville residents may have an input and voice in what goes on in their on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will last no longer than 30 minutes and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues that are related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on an item that may also be on the public hearing tab here on the agenda, we ask that you reserve your comments until the public hearing. So when you hear your name called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have 30 seconds left to speak. When you see the light turn red, your time has expired. And again, due to policy restrictions, we are not able to extend that time given. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the first person.
Now, we have seven speakers signed up for this evening. The first speaker is Mr. Everett Smith. Mr. Everett Smith.
Call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Reginald Prince Williams.
I may start?
Yes. Go right ahead, Mr. Williams.
Okay. I want to say good evening to everybody. My name is Mr. Reginald Prince Williams. I'm a politician and a meat processor for 14 years. 12, exactly. But the reason why I came here is because I went out for a prince, voting nationwide, worldwide, matter of fact. Being a prince in the United States and finding out if you really was from your heritage or, you know, some sort of way of background to finding out, you know, if you was one, would you be voted one? Would you be nominated one? Or would you be, you know, given some cash or, you know, land or whatever from whatever country, they see you as being a prince of that country? So I had all kinds of nations that gave me an email back and stuff like that, you know, contact me, you know, and say, okay, we feel you, you know, we're going to spread the word. We like what you're doing. So Syria actually gave me some money. They gave me a large cash sum of money because, one, you know, I also mentioned my baby's mother, she's from Syria. So that all, you know, intertwined. So as I'm on my computer, you know, I found I got a tap by Wells Fargo, you know, Fargo Wells and, you know, they had a, and they took the money for wire it from my computer to theirs. So actually, when I heard about it, I had to hurry up and run and go downtown and file a complaint. So the CIA men, they had got up with them, you know, and did what they had to do, they took the money back. So I turned around and told everybody, you know, we got it. So what happened was, being that I told the courtroom that I, you know, downtown, that I was going to go ahead and profit the money, and that's why I'm here today, because I come from, you know, a family, a huge family, but I'm single. So what I did, when I started off with Hope Mills, I asked Hope Mills, did they want to sell part of 87 to make a theme park? And I was going to fund it, you know, just buy the land from them, especially after we get the money confiscated and everything. So she told me she was going to get back up with me, you know, to come here and talk to y'all about it. So that's what I'm doing now. So they're saying since, you know, Fayetteville's part of 87 and also borderline of Hope Mills, I want to know if y'all willing to sell some of that land over there so I can go ahead and make a theme park. The space is big and got all the facilities for it. And I also found out they were selling Hope Mills Lake, so I was also in on that too. I'm in Sollytown? Okay. All right. After I had that meeting at Hope Mills, I got on the phone and talked to the mayor again. I told her, I said, okay, since I'm a meat processor, I want to go worldwide. I noticed she had a store, a convenience store, grocery store, that was shut down for a long time. I said, well, I told her, I don't want that, so I go ahead and turn it into a meat processor. Smaller than meat processor.
All right. Now you're out of time, Mr. Williams.
Now I'm out of time.
For the record, give us your address, please.
It's 1938 Pumpkin Road.
And what's that zip?
That's 28304.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. I hope y'all get up with me and, you know, decide on really what y'all want to do, if y'all want to, you know, negotiate and part is, you know, you got to have business.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Madam Clerk.
Now, our next speaker is Mr. Bill Bowman.
Welcome, Mr. Bowman.
Thank goodness I didn't have to follow those three lovely ladies, but Mr. Mayor, you and the council can just consider me another pretty face. But thank you very much. I'm very proud to be here on behalf of Up and Coming Weekly. I'm also here with two of our company representatives, Dr. Lyndon McAllister and Beverly Pone. And we came here for a very important reason, and that is to thank you, thank the city for being a part of our publication, allowing us to partner with the city to accentuate all the good things there is about this community. It makes it wonderful to live here and to thank you for helping us originate and start the Fayetteville Pocket Guide. This is our 13th year of doing the Pocket Guide and it's a very important publication to our community and it's a unique publication. And I wanted to make sure that especially the new council members know how unique this is and what it does in the community. It's unique because 13 years ago, we came to the city with an idea, and that is to create a publication that would not only welcome visitors and residents here, but provide a resource that they could depend on for all of the amenities that our cities had to offer and could be a good reflection of our quality of life. Once the city said they thought it was a great idea, then the county said it was a great idea, and then Cumberland County Schools said it was a great idea. Then John Morosky of the Convention and Visitors Bureau chimed in and said, I've got a better idea. And we set forth in putting together the Pocket Guide in collaboration with all those organizations and Fort Bragg. So together, that's what makes this publication unique. Everyone has it. Everyone uses it for the same purpose, and that is to promote our community, to talk about our traditions, to talk about our heritage, to talk about those things that make us unique from all the other communities. We have a great relationship with the city. This is what we do day in and day out, and good things last. Up and Coming's been around for 19 years. Kidsville's been around for 16, and now the Pocket Guide has been around for 13 years. And it gives us great pride to be able to go out there with a message from our mayor, a message from Fort Bragg, a message from our school system, a message from our county saying, come on down, this is a wonderful place. Thank you all for being a part of it and to help us be successful. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman, while you've still got 10 seconds left, tell us about your, the Kidsville, is that what it's called?
Kidsville News.
Is nationwide now?
Kidsville News was started here 16 years ago in cooperation with Cumberland County Schools. They helped us introduce it, or helped me introduce it to this community. We created it here in Cumberland County, and this is where it stayed, in Cumberland County Schools, extending out to private, proclial, and Christian schools in the first seven years of its life. In 2005, we started allowing other people to do it. And in a short period, now we're in 10 states, we're in 31 communities, and the Pocket Guide that started right here in Fayetteville, North Carolina, services 1.6 million children, teachers, and parents on a monthly basis, and we get to say it's from Cumberland County in Fayetteville, North Carolina.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you for asking. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Now, our next speaker is Mr. Tom King.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Tom King. I own a home at 1790 Naughty Oak Court in Fayetteville, subdivision of Hampton Oaks. I'll just start off by saying, in the last month and a half, I've learned more about Fayetteville streets than I ever wanted to know in my entire life. Hampton Oaks is a single entrance neighborhood, has seven streets, four cul-de-sacs, 84 homes, and no homeowners association. And Naughty Oak Court is the only private street in this neighborhood. Naughty Oak is a cul-de-sac. There's five homes on it and the families who live in it are single-family homes, lower-middle-class, fixed and retired income level live there, and all are Fayetteville taxpayers. The reason why I'm addressing the council tonight is because recently Fayetteville decided that Naughty Oak Court was going to be now a private street. I've lived in that home for 22 years and up until December, it was not. Or it was a normal road and then December, it became a private road. When my wife and I purchased our home in Hampton Oaks, it was a county. After annexation, the city maintained the streets. We've had city people in there working on the roads prior to, but in December, that all changed because the street was designated as then a private road. Like most, or like some, I purchased my home through a VA loan in 1992. Nowhere on my mortgage paperwork, and I scoured that thoroughly, does it say that that road was private. Additionally, VA requires, if you do live in a private road, the VA requires you to be in a homeowners association paying dues for repairs. We've never done that. I feel as a homeowner, I'm between a tug of war because from all outward appearances, since we've lived there, we thought the road was maintained. Now we're caught in the middle and it's all due to the sewer system that is going to come in. I'm pro doing that, but at the same time, we're between two divisions in the city that's saying, yes, no, 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 no. And as homeowner, I don't know what we're to do. The only thing I would ask the council members is this. Out of everything I've described in this neighborhood, does it make sense to you that one street out of an entire neighborhood, one street that has five homes on it, would be a private road? That's really all I have to say. I didn't use my entire time and thank you for your time.
Mr. King, in anticipation of you being here, we have asked PWC and also city staff, Mr. Thompson, to meet with you.
I've had the pleasure of talking with him. But I don't mind, they're good folks.
Yeah, I think there's... You have another speaker for Naughty Oaks.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Charles Hodges.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Charles Hodges and I reside at 1794 Naughty Oak Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina, and I would like to address the council. In 2003, prior to the Fayetteville annexation, Hampton Oaks subdivision and Naughty Oak Court were maintained by Cumberland County Rose Division when required. Our streets were patrolled by Cumberland County Sheriff's deputies. Our trash and yard debris were collected by a private company, which residents had to pay for. In 2004, after annexation into the city of Fayetteville, Hampton Oaks subdivision and Naughty Oak Court are now officially a part of Fayetteville. Our new, our area is now patrolled by Fayetteville City Police Department. Our trash, recycling, yard debris are now being collected by city employees as opposed to a paid contractor. It is just recently that the Naughty Oak Court road surface started to deteriorate. The city is notified by residents and repairs are made by city employees. We, the residents of Naughty Oak Court, pay all required taxes and have since annexation, only to be told recently that our street has been designated as a private road and is not a part of the city's roadway system. Why, we ask? The road is used by city vehicles that contributed to its state of disrepair. It, the roadway, does not meet acceptable standards for inclusion into the city's maintenance programs, what we were told. Public Works Commission sewer lines are slated to be installed in the future, and we, the residents, are being asked to pay approximately $800 per household to repair or repave the surface of our cul-de-sac to meet the standards for inclusion into the city's roadway systems. It is also on top of the estimated $5,000 that we would be required to pay for public works sewer installation. It is my hope that this city council will recommend that this error be corrected, that this will allow the city and the Public Works Commission to move forward and plan, with plans, to enhance our city as it was intended. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Now, our next speaker is Mr. Dale Skellicom.
Very close.
Sorry.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Dale Skellicom and I live at 1799 Naughty Oak Court. I would like to thank you for your listening to us tonight, all three of us, and encourage a prompt decision to designate Naughty Oak Court as a public street. This will allow PWC to maintain their progress for Project 7, construction area 16, a Phase 4 annexation, extending sewer surfaces to my neighborhood. During our research, we discovered numerous inconsistencies that so far have not been In 1985, the state accepted the initial plan and specifications for the subdivision. According to Section 1 Hampton Oaks subdivision road construction standard certification, Naughty Oak Court was designed, initially was designed as a public street. Normally, the second step would be for the state to accept Naughty Oak Court as a state This did not occur for any verifiable reasons. No one has been able to find the file for this step. Until 2013, it was seen as a public street and after annexation, it was maintained by the city. It wasn't until PWC Consulting Engineers firm discovered that Naughty Oak Court was not on their map. This is what brought this whole problem to light. As I understand it, the engineering department is reluctant to accept the street as public because of the conditions caused by the heavy city trucks turning around in such a small area. We did not have the degree of damage until after annexation and city garbage collection began. The de facto standard supports that this is a public street because, number one, it's functioned, it was designed as a public street, it's functioned as a public street. Street maintenance has been provided as needed by the city on numerous occasions. There is no discernible reason for the designation as a private street other than someone's estimation. There's nothing writing that says this. And also, I'd like to say, being a young guy, I didn't have the pleasure that Mr. Hurst had, but 29 years seems to be a sufficient time to discover the error and the state rectified the situation. 29 years, we've been living on that street. What, I got 28 seconds? I would ask that the Honorable Mayor and the City Council accept the street as public and to resurface Naughty Oak Court after sewer construction has been completed to assure that the street meets acceptable standards. I think it's only fair, and I got a few minutes left. If I make a mistake, I pay for it. If somebody else makes a mistake, let them pay for it. Thank you and thank you for your time.
Thank all three of you for being here, and again, I think staff has got some information for you, if you wouldn't mind meeting with them. Councilmember Wright wants to meet with you as well, so, Madam Clerk.
Now, our final speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jose I. Cardona. I live at 233 Addison Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. You can reach me by mail at J.I. Cardona. You can reach me by mail at J.I. Cardona, lowercase letters, at AOL dot com. Please do. I need to get you guys to get ahold of me, that way I could have your email, so when I make a comment or make some blogs, I could send them directly to you. I come here today to let you know that the last meeting that we had, when you guys bought the legal municipalities down here from Raleigh, I don't know how much you guys paid for that, if you paid anything at all, but I didn't get nothing out of that. Okay? Nothing whatsoever, unless you guys got a briefing before that. Fine, that was good, but I didn't get nothing out of it. I think it was a waste of time. They did have a discussion with the FAS people and the gentleman that is running the FAS right now. A super-duper individual has done a lot for Fayetteville and the FAS system. I'd like to send that guy to Chapel Hill for one week, all expenses paid by the city of Fayetteville. Chapel Hill, who has a smaller town, between fifty to sixty thousand, was able to transport people under bus system, over ten million people. That is a wow. Okay? Or less. If it figures wrong, somebody needs to check this out. I'd like to send him up there. He might have some things. Not only that, the buses up there look like accordions. They don't buy new buses. They buy caboosees that go with the buses. Something to look at. For all you members, you don't know me, and you probably heard of me, I need you to, before you go into the future, see what's happened in the past, especially with the budget, this city budget, and the Cumberland County Commissioner's budget. Go there, past year or the year before that, okay? And find out why. And answer to me, please, why are we still messing around with Black and Decker? Why are we still messing around with the Lumbee? I mean, the Lumbee building, right here, in the polluted park, festival park? The only thing that you guys are gonna be able to accomplish is something good for the people, or you're gonna lose your credibility in the years to come. So I'd rather walk out of this city council, not from you, saying, I got my credibility, I did something for the people, than saying that I didn't. Mr. Mayor, again, in the back wall, you don't have no picture of Mr. Pitts. You don't have no picture of Mr. Chaboni. You know, little things do make a difference. I thank you for having me.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers for public forum.
Saying that, we'll move on into item six point zero, which is reports from boards and commissions. First one we'll hear from is the Fair Housing Board. Ms. Patricia Tyson.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and city council, I am Patricia Tyson, and I'm the chair for the Fayetteville Fair Housing Board, and I do want to give the report for 2013, 2014. The Fair Housing Board, through the Human Relations Department, submitted a proposal for funding from HUD through a grant that the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Director Ron McElrath and North Carolina Human Relations Executive Director Emily Williams partnered to receive the funding. Emily Williams has formerly worked as an administrator of the HUD headquarters in Washington, D.C., and Greensville, North Carolina. We have successfully secured a forty thousand dollar grant to be implemented over a twelve-month period, beginning this month, February 2014. Sixteen thousand will be subcontracted with Consumer Credit Counseling Service to hold twelve all-day educational workshops revolving around housing, credit counseling, and the Human Relations Department will provide fair housing training to lenders and consumers throughout the community during the year 2013, 2014. Part of the sixteen thousand will be used to develop and provide brochures and other fair housing and lending, literature for our citizens. The other twenty-four thousand will be used directly by city staff to secure a part-time staffing position to involve in community engagement and education. The Fair Housing Board is a quasi-judicial entity. As such, we address complaints directly to the board through an appeals process. In 2012, 2013, the board did not have any complaints, but we did have some complaints that revolved around landlord-tenant law, and the human relations staff worked through those issues. Fair Housing Month is April, and we plan to promote the Fair Housing Month by providing opportunities throughout the community for educational resources and educational workshops throughout the month of April. We also will be working with the realtors, providing presenters in the landlord-tenant area. We also, part of what we plan to do is initiate additional partnerships throughout the community, and we'll be working, of course, with Consumer Credit Counseling Service, the U.S. Department of HUD, the North Carolina Human Relations Commission, the Fayetteville Cumberland Relations Commission, Cumberland County District Attorney's Office, area realtors, and others as we bring into the community conversation. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And when do you meet?
Well, actually, we're gonna meet this month. We usually, the third Wednesday of every quarter, we meet. So we'll be meeting this month, the third Wednesday.
Okay, great. Look forward to joining you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tyson. Next on the agenda is Ms. Kathy Waddell, the chairman of the Human Relations Commission. Welcome.
Welcome to... Well, I'm a little tired. We've been grading papers for our MLK scholarships, so we just came around here.
Very nice.
Anyway, hi, everybody, Mr. Mayor and the city council. This month is Human Relations Month, and we received a proclamation from our governor, Pat McCory, and I just want to pass it to our city clerk to give to you, Mayor. As stated, I'm Kathy Waddell. I live at eighteen fifty-three Guy Burger Drive. I am the chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission, and I just want to give some background information about our commission. I do want you to know that we work extremely hard. I am a volunteer, former principal, but I think that I'm working just as hard as when I was in school. Mr. McElrath, I think that he thinks I'm his employee, but that's fine. I'm working on it. Maybe I'll get paid in other ways. But the Human Relations Commission has historically provided services to citizens in the area of the American with Disabilities Act, ADA, human rights, civil rights, Title VI compliance, Title VII, by providing education and compliance measures. An annual recognition banquet is what we do to recognize the citizens and organizations, religious leaders, educators, and youth for furthering good human relation practices and principles in their daily endeavors. And we offer three one thousand Martin Luther King Junior scholarships, which is housed at the Cumberland County Foundation, the CCF, which funds were donated by numerous citizens, religious groups, and businesses, resulting in over forty-four thousand dollars in scholarships to eligible students, have been awarded over the years, and presently has an endowment over fifty thousand dollars. So people have really been giving to us, and we've been working really hard to get those funds. Now, things that we've done in the past, several years ago, the Human Relation Commission received national recognition for its study circles, which resulted in helping Fayetteville receive the two thousand and one All-American City Award. And one of the ideals that came out of this citizen participation project was the Fire Science Academy at Fayetteville State University. The Mary Reynolds Babcock Foundation chose Fayetteville's Fire Chief Benny Nichols to receive his prestigious award, and he was considered the outstanding human relation person, and they awarded him twenty-five thousand dollars. And then Chief Nichols was invited to speak all over the country. Also, during racial tensions in the late nineties between black and white police officers, a study circle program was created also, and the study circles recommended that all city employees receive human relations training. And a course was led by volunteer city employees where they participated in the training. The Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission provides services for the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County through an inter-local agreement of two thousand and three, and that the commission consists of eleven appointees by the Fayetteville City Council, four appointees by Cumberland County Commission, and one ex-official uniform official and alternate, and one civilian and alternative EO official appointed by Fort Bragg. So we have a lot of people that are involved in our commission. The Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Staff consists of only three people. They need a little bit more help.
Plus yourself.
As a volunteer, I'm giving free. You don't give me any health insurance or anything, but really and truly, I enjoy being where I am.
I'll try to get your salary doubled.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. But anyway, the county has not been available in the past three years due to budget cuts, so I'm really trying to help Ron and get somebody in there. Budget cuts cut out that county person. I am willing to work. I enjoy what I do. My years will be coming up soon, so we're gonna have to find somebody else to do all of that, but they work extremely hard, and I've learned so much. But let me tell you what we're doing as of 2013 and 14. We're gonna have our banquet, and Ron told me he put this in your seat. Did you all get this? In your box? Oh, okay. We are having our banquet, and we expect to see each and every one of you, a beacon of light in the community, and we're going to be that light in the community, okay? And it is our annual recognition banquet, and it's going to be at Snyder Memorial Baptist Church on Thursday, March the twentieth, at six p.m. And our guest speaker is Dr. James A. Anderson, Chair, Chancellor of Fayetteville State University, and Sonny Kelly, Master of Ceremony. He is Director of Operations and Programs, Fayetteville Urban Ministry. Forty dollars, that's all, forty dollars. We expect to see you there. We want you to know, again, that we are giving out those three MLK applications. As I told you, we were in the Cape Fear Room, reading those applications to determine the three students who will get that. We also want you to know that we can't continue to do the same old things, the same old way, and get the same old results, so we have to do things to make things better. Want you to know that the Fair Housing Board, along with Human Relations, have come together and to be partners for the annual recognition banquet. That's what we do. We come together. We are not a group of people who sit in a corner and only do that. And I want you to know some of the partnerships that we are dealing with. Cumberland County Foundation, our scholarship, our endowment is over fifty thousand dollars. The Fayetteville Cumberland County Ministerial Council, Martin Luther King Breakfast, other partners, such as the Parks and Recreation Department, the North Carolina Martin Luther King Commission, the North Carolina Human Relations Commission, United Way Leadership Program, the Cumberland County School Board, the NAACP, the Greater Fayetteville United WIDU, the military. And so we have networked together. Those of you who were at the breakfast saw that we had over eighty kids that came. That was a grant that was written along with the Ministerial Council, in which we got that from the MLK Commission in Raleigh, and we went there for that presentation. So we just want you to know that we're really working hard, and that we thank you, and we expect to see you, because we are a beacon of light in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Thank you for what you do for the city of Fayetteville as well.
Thank you, and thank you for doubling my voice.
Yes, ma'am. Council will move to seven point zero, which is the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything?
Move your approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second.
End of second. Any discussion? Counsel, I'll ask for your vote.
I'm gonna vote against it.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. I'll remind you, your microphones are on.
Testing, testing.
And eight point zero is the public hearings. Welcome, Mr. Shuford, to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We have a fairly simple code amendment for you tonight that addresses the roadways that are shown in this map. I-295, All-American Freeway, Martin Luther King Junior Freeway, and a portion of 301 that is limited access, basically north of the Botanical Garden. There are properties that front on these roadways that undergo development, and our code currently requires sidewalks be provided along all street frontages. The DOT will not allow sidewalks to be installed along limited-access highways for safety and other reasons, so we think it would be fair to drop the requirement for sidewalks along these roadways, because the only way a developer can meet our requirement would be to pay into our sidewalk fund. It does seem a little inequitable to require a sidewalk where one cannot ever be provided. So this amendment does not change any of our other requirements that deal with sidewalks on both sides of the street in most cases, and as a consequence, we're recommending that you adopt the code amendment as proposed by both the city staff and by the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we just have one.
Okay. Yes, it's a public hearing.
Our first speaker is Mr. Jose Cardona.
Okay. Let me read the preface here, Mr. Cardona. You should have signed up with the clerk prior to, which obviously you did. You will be allowed three minutes, unless there's more than one person, and there is not. Time will not count against you if a council member asks a question. State your name and home address, please.
Thank you, sir. And again, my name is Jose I. Cardo... Jose Ivan Cardona. I live at two thirty-three Addison Street in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Again, J.I. Cardona at AOL dot com. I'm opposing to this. I'm opposing to anything that takes away from the city ordinance. Take away. If you want to give me some more, I would more than happy to take it. If you take it away now, when those, when I-295 is finished, there's gonna be a lot of traffic coming through there, and there's gonna be a lot of development. You know that. Everybody knows that. You're gonna have a gas station behind the gas station. You're gonna have a food line. You're gonna have housing. You're gonna have everything. So why take away what this require? It is a requirement. You already approved it. You're not gonna do it for the neighborhood. My neighborhood does not have no sidewalks. I got kids that are walking from, okay, the neighborhood all the way to Westover, on one side of the road. Has anybody tried to cross Morganton Road in the morning, crossing through there like crazy? So why are we gonna do this to the Department of Transportation? Why do we wanna do this to anybody? The ordinance is in place. It works. You got little chop-chop-chops, pieces of sidewalk, so what? We could hook up, little by little by little. We don't have... It took me almost twenty years to get, what was it, Morganton Road on one side to get done, almost twenty-something years. I arrived here in nineteen seventy-three. The first thing that I looked was that. Where's the sidewalks? What's wrong with the city? Gentlemen, we got more people walking in the streets today than what we did ten years ago, five years ago. The reason it was, the economy is real bad, they don't have the transportation, okay? They need to get to the stores, so they're walking. They're also exercising, they're making themselves more fit, okay? And nobody here could tell me, okay, that is no good for us. Wrong. It's good if we take it away. Now, also that, on the left- Now, also that, on the last meeting, you guys had a guy from the community of development. He said that Yakon Road, we cannot do nothing to Yakon Road, okay? What happened to the money for the tornado that hit Yakon Road? Where's that money went to? Why is there no sidewalks only on one side of Yakon Road, and we got little chop-chop-chop, little development, a little piece of sidewalk? Don't take nothing away from us on the contrary. Ask them to build it, and build it good so it lasts another ten or twenty years. Any questions? I thank you for your time.
Press your light, please. Mr. Moan, I saw yours first. Go ahead.
There was a question for Mr. Shuford. If the public hearing opened or closed, Mr. Cardona still has thirty-four seconds, but this wasn't for Mr. Cardona. I might have pressed too early. My fault.
It wasn't for me, no problem.
No, it was for Mr. Shuford.
Cardona, do you have any, you're done?
Well, again, what you take away from this city, you're taking away from our children, children crossings, children in the neighborhoods. Again, we have Pinehurst, we have older schools, high schools, they don't have no sidewalks. I thank you.
Okay. We can close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Shuford, for Mr. Moan.
Mr. Shuford, I noticed these are limited-access roads. Where on some of our highways, it says no pedestrians, no mopeds, things like that. This ordinance change has, it has no impact, like say, our Cliffdale Rim or Morganton or Skybow or Pamalee, Ramsey. Is it just these four limited-access roads where NC DOT won't allow us to build in the right-of-way?
Great question, Mr. Moan. That's exactly right. It only will apply in these types of circumstances. This, perhaps, an example might help the public understand this. This would be like requiring sidewalks to be built on I-95. It's, it would be an unsafe situation because of the speeds and the expectation on the part of the drivers to not have pedestrians in that sort of circumstance.
Thank you, Mr. Shuford.
Okay. And what do you call the other roads? They're not limited-access. Are they interconnecting state-maintained roads, or is there a term for that?
Well, most of the larger roads in the city are indeed state-maintained, and you'd be looking at arterials or major collectors. Those would be the ones in which we certainly would continue to require, and you named quite a few, ones that we would require sidewalks to be constructed as part of development.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
The gentleman mentioned I-295 in his discussions about eventually being developed with stores and things of that nature on I-295. My question to you, is that realistic, that there should be sidewalks on I-295 or a thorough way of that sort, even after being developed? If that is the case, would those ordinance be changed to put sidewalks on those after the development began? How's that work?
Well, Mr. Wright, there will not be any development that will have immediate access to I-295. The access there will occur where you have interchanges and other roads.
Be side roads.
The side roads. And in those cases, there would be sidewalks required in all circumstances.
Okay. Gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. I'm sorry, Mr. Colvin.
How you doing, Mr. Shuford? A question for you. In the packet was an example of a location that had this instant of church, I believe, on Highway 301 that was mentioned. Can you give a little more clarity as to how circumstance where there was an actual construction that took place on one of these DOT highways that you described that was required to do that? Give us a situation with that. I'm trying to project another instance like that where we would have a similar situation that came up before, you know, which would play into the decision-making.
Well, if you think about any of these roadways, there's opportunities for development properties that are right next to them. For example, the mall is right next to the All-American Freeway. So in that circumstance, if the mall had been developed today, our requirements would be for a sidewalk to be provided along all street frontages, including the All-American. And what we're suggesting is that would not be the right place to put a sidewalk, nor would it be fair to require someone to pay a fee in lieu for a sidewalk that could not be constructed because of NC DOT rules and common sense for that matter.
Thank you. Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the amendment to Articles thirty-five and thirty-six, as presented by staff to exempt development from sidewalk requirements when the frontage is DOT-controlled access.
Second.
Okay. Have a first and second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous.
Thank you, Bob.
Nine point zero one, and other items of business. Ask Ms. Smith to come up. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the revenue and expenditure report.
Yes, sir. For the twelve month, or for the six months ended December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. What we'll do is you have the detailed report in your packet as well as the PowerPoint, so my intent is to just cover the highlights unless you have a particular interest to go over an item. We'll look at general fund revenues and expenditures, stormwater system, transit, environmental services, and airport revenues and expenditures in this PowerPoint. Just to orient you to this slide, what we have in front of you are the general fund revenues in major categories. The first numerical column is for the first six months of last fiscal year. The second numerical column is the budget as of December thirty-first this fiscal year, then the actuals through December thirty-first, and finally, the percentage change of actuals comparing this year through the first six months compared to last year at the same timeframe. The slides will all be presented in this format, and then the numbers are shown in millions. So with that, I'll just give you some brief highlights about this particular table. As you can see, property tax revenues are up about six point two percent. That is primarily related to the current-year tax levy, and that is because our current-year tax levy is about one point seven percent greater than it was last year at that same time. Well, you may say, well, why a six percent increase? It just so happens that the timing of our collections are better as of twelve thirty-one compared to last year. For example, as of twelve thirty-one, we collected seventy-eight percent of our current real and personal property levy compared to seventy-six percent, and that's why we have a bump in terms of the increase in property tax revenues. You're also seeing the impact of the transition in the Tax and Tax Together program going from Cumberland County to being collected by DMV, so that's also reflected there. The other taxes category, that's primarily down about forty-four percent because we are no longer collecting taxes, privileged license tax on internet sweepstakes. Last year, at that time, we'd collected about one point three million. Since we're no longer levying on that type of business, that's why we have a decline in that category. In terms of intergovernmental revenues, we'll talk about that on the next slide. And the next category is fees and services. There is a bit of a decline in that revenue, and it's primarily associated with a decline at December for building HVAC, plumbing, and electrical permits. They're down about five hundred and forty-seven thousand for the first six months. We're hopeful that that will pick up steam in the second half of the year. In terms of, I'm gonna skip down to the other financing sources category. That is budgeted at about fourteen point five four million for the current year. We've collected about six million. This primarily consists of the transfer from the Electric Utility Fund, and then the other budgeted item is about a two point two million dollar loan, and I think we'd already discussed that briefly before, and we will plan to enter into a installment financing agreement for about two million dollars before June thirty. So we expect that budget item to be right on target. And then finally, the last item on this slide, the fund bounce appropriation. You can see we've budgeted about six million dollars in preparation of our fund bounce, which is essentially the city's savings account. You will actually never see revenue in this category because you're really drawing from your savings account. It's not an influx of cash, if you will. So that will always show as zero. And total revenues to date as of twelve thirty-one were about eighty-two million dollars compared to about eighty-one million last fiscal year same time. In terms of the intergovernmental revenues, they primarily consist of sales tax revenues and utility tax revenues, and we talked about that briefly on Saturday. As you can see, our sales tax revenues, while we're through December, because of the timing when we received those from the state, we've only actually received through October by the time we're now presenting this report to you. So there's always that lag time between receipts and when we're able to report on that. And our sales tax is down about one-half of one percent for the first four months. But we can see that monthly that really is rather volatile, so I wouldn't reach a significant conclusion based on that so far. In terms of our utility taxes, that's primarily electric, natural gas, telecommunications, and video programming. Those revenues are actually distributed on a quarterly basis, and because of the timing when we received that from the state, at this point, we can only report on the revenues we've received as of September thirty, two thousand and thirteen. Overall, that category is down a little. It's about, down about one point six percent compared to the same period last fiscal year. Powellbill revenues, we've actually received all those revenues as of now, and that's actually about a hundred and forty-five thousand more than the budgeted amount, so we actually came in over budget on that category. And then in terms of any other significant change, there is some change in federal and other state revenues. In terms of the amount, it's not that much, but the percentage appears large, and that's because a significant portion of that related to a fire grant that we had in fiscal year thirteen that basically expired as we moved into the current year, and that's why that's primarily down. Then finally, the last category on this slide is local revenues, and that primarily consists of county recreation taxes that we receive in order to administer the county's recreation programs by the city. This slide, I really won't go into this, but you can see the volatility of the sales tax by month. What I will just point out is the blue line represents last year, or I'm sorry, represents the most recent twelve-month period, and then the red line is comparing the previous year's twelve-month period, and we always update that whenever we present this to you, so you can kind of see a rolling twelve-month history of how sales tax is being generated. Now we'll move to the general fund expenditures. This slide shows general fund expenditures by major category of expenditure. The columns are the same as they were on the previous slides. I'll just point out that administration consists of a number of functions, and that includes city council, city manager, finance, IT, and other functional areas, so generally all the administration for the general fund. The increase in this particular category can primarily be attributed to information technology because we had some major planned information technology projects, and we transferred those funds to a capital project fund in order to administer those projects. So that was to be expected and was planned. I would say the next item that I would point your attention to is the environmental services category, which is about halfway down the page. You can see last year, we'd spent about four million dollars through the first six months. This year, we don't have a budget for that category, nor do we have any actuals. That is because we transferred that function to the Environmental Services Enterprise Fund. So at this point, that has been transitioned over. I will point out to you that the other appropriations category at the bottom of this particular slide, you can see over a three million dollar increase. That is directly related to environmental services, and that's where the general fund is sending money to the enterprise fund to help support that function, and that is planned as well. That was part of the planned budget for the year. Other than that, I would probably just primarily point out to you the increase in the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Budget, which may, you may notice. That's really related to some one-time funding for some significant maintenance and building renovation projects that were budgeted for the fiscal year. And then finally, there is a bit of a bump up in the other functions category, and that's primarily related to some funding that the general fund sent to a project budget for the Merkison Road redevelopment project. So that's why that's up. So these are all items that we expected, nothing unforeseen and in line with our budget. Next, we'll cover very briefly a couple of the other significant funds of the city. In terms of Stormwater Fund, you have the slides in front of you and the detailed information in front of you. I would just say that this particular category, we did transfer the street resurfacing, I'm sorry, the street sweeping function into this fund this year. That was planned and budgeted for, and I would generally say that the revenues and expenditures for this fund are on target. In terms of transit, in the slide in front of you, the single item I really want to point out to you is the federal and state grants category. We have about a two point four million dollar budget planned for federal and state grants. We do expect to receive those grants. We're just awaiting those receipts or those awards from the state for the state maintenance assistance funds, and then the federal grant. It is not uncommon to get that in the second half of the year. Other than that, I would generally say that our revenues and expenditures for this fund are also on target. As I pointed out before about the Environmental Services Fund, this fund previously only incorporated the recycling function. We have determined that in the effort to be as transparent as we can about all the environmental function, environmental functional areas with solid waste collection, we have shown this in an enterprise fund, and that's why you see that the actuals this year have increased significantly over last year. We've simply moved those from the general fund into this fund, so you can see that separately. Other than that, I would say that our revenues and expenditures are on target. The Airport Fund, this is a fund that does not require any assistance from the general fund to operate. I would say our revenues and expenditures are generally on target, and again, no assistance is provided by the general fund in order to operate this fund. It is self-sufficient. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions you may have, and if you, if you think of any further questions you may have, I'm happy to take your calls in the coming days as well.
As you always have been. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Yes. You mentioned about the enterprise- Fund, the Environmental Enterprise Fund?
Yes, sir.
And that the, and that the environmental fund was switched to the enterprise fund?
Yes, sir. Why would we do something like that?
Yeah.
Well, we were already capturing recycling costs because we were trying to track those because that can be considered like a private-type enterprise. You can go out and hire a company to do garbage pickup, if you will. But then the solid waste piece of it, the household garbage, that sort of thing was in the general fund. It seemed to be a bit of a disconnect. So what council decided to do at the guidance of city staff was to combine all those functions into one and reflect it in an enterprise fund, so you could see what that type of activity is actually costing you to deliver all solid waste services. An enterprise fund is something that acts more like a business in terms of you're trying to see what the costs are, and are your fees in line with the services being provided, or if you wanted to consider contracting out, you could also evaluate those costs easier if it's in a separate fund.
Okay. My last question would be the airport.
Yes, sir.
You said it was, it's leased. Is the air, is the land leased? If you can go back to the last slide, I'm just trying to understand.
It's not leased. It's not leased. It has leases with other companies, like with private companies there, that would lease space, like car companies, that sort of thing.
Okay. So we actually own?
We own the airport, yes, sir.
Okay. Got you. Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp.
Slide just before this was just happening. The general fund transfer, I'm looking at third column now.
Yes, sir.
Does that three and a half come from solid waste, or did it come from general fund unobligated money going in for environmental services?
General fund revenues have always supported solid waste services, but it's more transparent to you now because the contribution from the city's funds outside of any fees that may be generated from solid waste, it's more apparent to you because now you can see how much general fund support is being contributed to fund this function. That is consistent with the budget. It's really no change. It's just now that you've seen it pulled out separately from the other general fund activities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McDoole?
Yes, Ms. Smith. I've noticed in the 60 days that I've been here that you do an excellent job. You got your fingers on all of these checkbooks and you are making sure that things work really fine. I really appreciate that.
I thank you and I hope I continue to earn your confidence.
I have, I did notice in your detail outlay that you allowed a couple of departments. I had about 22 questions and you cleared all of them up but two.
Okay.
And those two happened to deal with the city attorney and the city manager's office.
Okay.
I noticed they run into just a little bit past budget. But you, you know, and, uh, my question to you is, do you think they're taking advantage of the new council folk?
No, sir. No, sir. Um, certainly thing, some things are routine and would occur on some regular frequency, like payroll. We do payroll every two weeks. But if you have, for example, like contract services and you have a particular contract, that could be on a cycle that's not necessarily one twelfth every month. So I would associate it with that, probably in contract services for the city manager's office. And, um, illegally it may be as well for contract services, sir.
Just checking.
All right.
We won't ask Ms. Smallton any of that. She might give you the truth. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Um, we don't have a recommendation of any action, but I just wanted to tell you thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Crisp?
As always, Ms. Smith, the question for our viewing and listening audience is, how are we doing? Because the, the question is, are we in red or how are we doing?
I think, I think we are in line with budget so far, generally speaking. Um, what we are going to be keeping our eyes on will be the, uh, sales tax revenues particularly. Um, I, I think property taxes are right where we expect them to be. We know what the transfer is going to be from the utility fund. The other big revenue source is the sales tax. So we're just going to see, we're going to monitor that month to month. And we're also looking forward to receiving some, um, guidance from the North Carolina League of Municipalities on where they project the rest of the year to be, as well as what the projections are for the new year based on, uh, guidance they receive from the State Economist's Office. You're very welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Colvin?
Ms. Smith, thank you for that, uh, presentation. I just had a, a couple of questions. I see in the, uh, general fund expenditures, I saw there was about a, um, 7% increase with the police. I know you explained the 27% increase in the general administration fund for, you said it was for additional IT projects?
Yes, sir.
Any explanation about why the police is, uh, was running about 7% over what they spent last year this time?
Well, part of that would naturally be, um, pay adjustments. Because if you had a three to four percent, for example, pay adjustment for sworn officers and other personnel, you're going to naturally see some growth in that particular category. Um, I can see, if I can quickly tell you, if I can't put my finger on it tonight, I can, uh, share that with the council tomorrow. Uh, it looks like there is some, uh, about an $800,000, $850,000 increase in the payroll, which I would expect there to be some increase because of pay adjustments. Trying to see if there's anything else that jumps out at me readily. That appears to be the primary item that, uh, I can identify. If I determine there, there's anything in addition to that, their maintenance costs, for example, are up about 140,000. Um, and that may be consistent with some maintenance contracts. But, but that singularly, and that's just the salary line. So think about benefits follow payroll, like, uh, retirement costs, that sort of thing. I think it's probably primarily in the payroll.
So when money is allocated to that particular department, are the expenses dispersed through your office? Or they have their own internal?
No, we disperse everything through finance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I don't see any other questions. Counsel will go, uh, item 10.0. Those administrative reports are in our packet. Uh, moving to 11.0, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Thank you, counsel.
Out of here, out of here. Wreck it.